All right, ladies and gentlemen, we call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Chief, can I get the roll call, please? I'm sorry. Can I get the roll call, please?
Just look at us and call our names.
Yeah, we're here.
Commissioner Arthur Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Yeah.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson is here. Let the record reflect that all Commissioners are present, including the Mayor.
Here, thank you. Will you raise me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bag your hats with me for a brief prayer.
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, on behalf of our citizen, Lord, ask that you continue to watch over them and provide a hedge of protection over them, God, through you. Anything is possible, God. I ask that you watch over our police department, watch over our EMS and fire service, as well as our troops serving here and overseas, Lord. Be with us as we leave here this evening, and we will gather here again. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Warnock, are you ready?
I'm trying to find it on here.
Okay. Mr. House?
Okay. Hello, my name is Taylor House. This is my Eagle Scout proposal for my building of a Gaga pit, so...
Yeah, just a quick second.
Okay.
Mr. House, were you involved in the other projects that your family has been doing?
Yes, I participate in helping them out, building them.
Yes, you did. We appreciate it. Appreciate all the work your family's been doing in our parks this year, and your scout troop also.
So, as I said, this is my Eagle Scout proposal for my Gaga pit project. So, what exactly is Gaga? Well, Gaga is a game that was developed in Israel. It's kind of a fast-paced, safe version of Dodgeball. It's become more mainstream in America in the years since. It's playable by people of all ages. It's very fun, in my opinion, and many others in my troop will agree. I think it'll be a great addition to the town in proving the different activities people can do. So, there are many ways to build a Gaga pit, but I want to use this bracket system, which will improve the quality and how stable it will be, and it will last a lot longer. So, as for flooring inside the Gaga pit, so it wouldn't become a mud pit, I see my picture downloaded. So, our Gaga pit that we actually built for my troop, it became kind of muddy because we didn't put anything inside it. So, we're going to use these floorings. They are durable, they will drain, and they are comfortable on the feet as well. So, as for the space, it will be put in the Veterans Community Park, across the bridge by the cabin. So, how I like to describe it is where the driveway meets the parking lot, it has, it's going in that direction of where the driveway is, but will be like parallel with where the driveway and parking lot meets. So, it'll be in that kind of area, but not alongside, it'll just be a bit further back, but that's about where it will be, just about. Write the step-by-step. So, the first step will be to clear out the area. I'll clear for my building. It will be about a 25 by 20-foot square, because the spaces, the Gaga pit itself is an octagon about 20 feet from each wall. So, that'll be, that would suffice for space. Then we'll remove a bit of grass just off the top from the building area, then we'll further level the ground by installing sand, weed block, paper, and pea gravel. We'll install the flexed edging as well, so no pea gravel actually washes out, pea gravel or sand washes out. Sand the rough spots from boards, and then we'll construct it by placing the boards inside the brackets, and we'll assemble them. So, we'll cut and install the flooring to size, install the flooring to size, and then we will cut out the entry, since the Gaga pit is about 30 inches tall, so it's difficult for people to get in and out. So, we'll have to cut out a entryway. We'll sand off those edges, and then we'll attach rules sign. So, the price will cost around $2,300, and yeah, I already said about the size. So, I think that is it, I believe. Yes. Any questions?
Veterans Community Park.
Is it Veterans Community Park? And this is a project that Taylor brought to me, and I didn't know a whole lot about Gaga pits until fairly recently, so it turns out that they're a fairly popular thing, yeah. So, you know, we're, and we discussed some of the design considerations, and for example, the muddiness, and he came up with the solutions on how to solve some of those problems. We talked about some of the maintenance concerns, and so we've, I think we've got all those ironed out.
I think it's great. I think it'll be a great attraction to Veterans Community Park.
Anyone else have any more questions? Okay.
So, thank you, Taylor.
Thank you. Ms. Emslie?
I do not live in town, but I've been around for 29 years this past week. I'm here tonight to raise awareness for not only this elected officials, but also the residents of the town of Rising Sun to the black fly problem in the local area. A group of concerned citizens in the Rising Sun, Conawago, Calora area have been working for a few years and intensely all summer to get some relief from our state and county government, but until very recently, actually just last week, our pleas were falling on deaf ears. Technically, the black flies, or gnats, are Simulium gening C. I call them gnats. They lay their eggs in clean, moving water. Once hatched, the flies leave the streams and go on to land searching for a blood meal. They have been found to travel as far as 35 miles from their source to feed. They're in swarms, getting in eyes, ears, nose, and mouth. They sometimes bite, excuse me, leaving welts on people, livestock, and pets. Because these black flies produce multiple generations per season, they appear as early as May and can remain a major nuisance until well in November. In 2016, the University of Maryland conducted a study in our area that found the larvae in the Octorara Creek, but nothing was done at that time to eliminate the problem. Pennsylvania has been treating the Susquehanna River and the Octorara Creek for the problem for several years and has been successful. In Maryland, the Potomac River in Washington County was treated in a pilot program in 2017, and it was also successful. However, when we have asked for help in Cecil County, we've been given excuses. Everything from "we need another study to be done," or "there isn't any money budgeted," or "it's some other department's problem." The successful treatment, this is going to be interesting, the successful treatment is Bacillus thuringensis, Israelensis. Fortunately, we call it BTI. It is a naturally occurring soil bacteria used as a microbial insecticide to control the spread of vector-borne diseases, protect public health, and manage insect/pest species. It is added directly to the streams at specific intervals on a regular schedule. It is non-toxic to humans, mammals, birds, beneficial insects, fish, plants, and most aquatic organisms. Additional information can be found on the Maryland Department of Agriculture's website under Maryland's Black Fly Program: Helpful Information and Frequently Asked Questions. We very recently, a few days ago, learned that the Department of Agriculture has a University of Maryland graduate student doing a study right now. We're trying to get information to her, asking that not only the Octorora Creek be tested, but also Stone Run, because we believe it will also be found to contain the larvae. Since Stone Run runs through Rising Sun, we wanted to include the officials and residents of the town in our efforts and hope that by adding more voices, we might get some attention. We are collecting signatures on a letter to send to our government leaders, asking that they step up and treat the problem. I have letters here if anybody would like to sign one. For more information, our group has created a website. Please visit it. It's blackflyaction.org, and I had asked Calvin to bring it up. Thank you for your attention. If anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. There are also a bunch of people here from our group. None of us are Rising Sun town residents, but we're all suffering from the same thing, and I believe that residents of town are also having the problem.
Well, I would say this. I would say that, you know, all of us feel as if Calora and the 21911 zip code is Rising Sun, so we thank you all very much for coming out. Ms. Emslie, if I could have a copy of that letter, I would be interested in signing it and adding my name to it, but Commissioner Pearson, if you have...
Would you add Mason Run to that list also?
Watch this.
Come on. Dee, by the way, I wish I could have talked my wife into coming tonight, because we literally cannot go in our backyard.
Yeah, I mean, this, with the parks this year, with, yeah, with trying to, well, trying to build boardwalks and stuff, I'm, yeah, I'm about second. I've been going through a lot of bugs, but, hey Dee, does the fact that we've had rain almost every single day this summer contribute to this, I assume?
Doesn't seem to.
It doesn't?
It's been this way for like 10 years.
Okay. I wasn't sure if they, if it's something that a dry summer would be.
No.
No.
No. My wife takes one step in the backyard, and she is, it's like, we sit outside and see the swarms, so. It's not just in wherever you may live in Calora, or she lives off Slicers Mill and all. It is, it's everywhere around there.
Calvin, could you click on...
Blackfly Streams?
Blackfly Action Network? The, I can't read it from here.
Blackfly Streams.
Blackfly Streams, please.
These are all the waterways that the US, the US, USD's excavate this in this area, and since all of them are running water, those are the spots where it's breached, it may be that residents around all of these streams are...
So, my question to you is, who exactly have we reached out to as far as elected officials to try to get involved?
Other than us.
Governor Hogan, Senator Cardin, Senator Van Hollen, Representative Harris, Delegate Hornberger, Delegate Casilli, Delegate Riley, Senator Norman, Councilman Schneckenberger, and the Director from the DNR, Thomas Parham.
How many of them responded?
Two.
Okay.
However, last week, a few of us went to the county council meeting, and I contacted, I called Dan Schneckenberger before I went and said, "I'm warning you, we're coming to talk about this tonight." He thanked me for the warning, and he remembered getting information in the past from people. We've been working at this for years, contacting people.
As far as I'm concerned, I would, I have no issue contacting some of those people and adding my name to the list, but I would also say that you're a very effective lobbyist yourself, especially when you are face-to-face with people.
Well, it turned out that after our, the presentation at the county meeting last week, we got attention. Al Wine came out on Thursday, I think it was, and he took a little tour with us, and these things are drawn to the tallest thing. Al Wine is really tall. And we were walking around with Dave Rudolph, who happens to live a few doors from me. Dave Rudolph is also very tall. So, the other two of us that were there weren't really bothered very much, because the swarms were up here at their heads. It was extremely effective. There's two wedding venues right within a few blocks of where we all live, and they are, their businesses are being affected, because people don't want to come and hold a wedding reception with these swarms of gnats. So, that's when I found out that this University of Maryland graduate student is doing a study. They gave me her name, they will not give me her phone number, but I asked them to please have her call me, so I'm waiting for that phone call. If anybody else in my bunch would like to say something, this now would be the time.
Dee, have you reached out to Al Miller about this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm trying to give him till the 4th of December, when he is sworn in, but he is aware of it as well.
Okay, good.
This is, this is how we sometimes have to go outside.
In other words, they're comfortable, but they don't really agree. I used to have a whole pack of...
Are you sure you're not running bees out there too, with that? You're going to look at it first.
Brenda has a hat, too. You didn't bring your hat today. She took it to the county meeting, but she didn't bring it today, so. So, please add your voices to ours. Again, just as recent as last week, we seem to possibly be getting somewhere, although I did get a letter back from Van Hollen's office the day before yesterday. He sent me what the Department of Agriculture sent him, which was, "We need to study it." We don't need to study it, we need to treat it. We need to treat it. We know what to do.
Can I ask, do you know offhand what the cost of the treatment is?
Gary?
I called Pennsylvania about two years ago and talked to one of the guys that runs up there, and I estimated for a season in materials, because you buy stuff in the gallon jugs, and you literally just dump it in the Octorara, it's like $1,200 in materials.
That's a lot.
How often?
That's a season.
Just one season?
Yeah. And the DNR talks about that's wrong.
It's a seasonal treatment, that's not that much.
The DNR said that's wrong, it's incorrect, you can't just throw money in for it. That's everything. And you know, come back and tell us, how much is it going to be? You still need to have a person go out there. We can, you can buy the stuff yourself, and you can dump it yourself, but it's illegal.
I was going to say, yeah.
I'm going to say right now, on the record, my response to that was, "Well, there's always dark."
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So, please help us if you can.
Thank you. All right. Town Administrator, we are considering a resolution tonight, 2018-04, which was introduced at the last town meeting. Thank you.
That is correct.
Which was introduced at the last town meeting on Tuesday, and it has sat for a week. Do you have any more information on that, Town Administrator?
The, I didn't put out complete new copies of the document, however, there were two corrections that had to be made to the document, so what I wanted to do was to give you those pages and just highlight them, so that you have those.
Okay.
You should take one from each pile.
Oh, so there were two pages now?
We got them, we're good.
Okay, Augie, do you have, you have too many, right?
I don't have another one of this.
So, the first update is on page three of the document. Under 2.1, General Employee Conduct, the item number B had previously said that core hour, basically it said the core hours of operation for the town are 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. That's what we were letting the, in the personnel manual, letting the employees know, but as you know, the elected body has changed the hours of operation. So, what you have in front of you is new language that replaces the core hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. with "town business hours of operation shall be established by the Mayor and Commissioners" to coincide with what is really happening. And that's what a lot of our document upgrades have been over the last, you know, 10, 11 years or so, is been just making sure that all of our documents are consistent in how we're actually operating. The other item is, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, different employees, based upon their classification, their regular work hours can be different. In other words, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, police and firefighters technically work more hours before they are available to get overtime for hours worked. We all traditionally think of the work week being 40 hours, but under the Fair Labor Standards Act, it can be higher for police and firefighters. The town many years ago had changed that to have our police officers working 42 hours per week, and our non-police officers working 40 hours per week. So, we vaguely referenced that in the personnel manual in the past, but we never directly had language that talked about what the regular work week would be. So, this clarifies it right here in item number C. So, item number C is all new language there. And then the other change is if you go to section 6-8, the single piece of paper you would have would be page 33, but it's under section 6-8, and Commissioner Arthur Reed, I'm not sure if the previous document had the right page numbers down on the bottom.
Yeah, that's what's got me confused, the page numbers are different.
So, if you go to 6.6-8, section 6-8.
Page 31 on the original document. You have two sections, 6-8.
That's another typo to correct.
And two sections, 6-9.
Yeah, the automatic numbering is not, so I'll correct that when we produce the actual personnel manual, the updated manual. So, if you go, Commissioner Arthur Reed, do I have you on the right page?
Yeah.
Okay. In the middle of the document would say section 6-9, Department Time Off Scheduling. This was a concept of making sure that department heads are not allowing too many employees off at one time that makes it difficult for the individual departments to be able to complete tasks. So, since each department has a different number of employees, we did not try to deal with the issue by saying you can only allow so many employees off at one time. We figured out a percentage formula, and the last document you had, the last sentence had said, "Reduces the available assigned weekly man-hours of the department by more than 30 percent," and it went on to say in the other document about 40 percent for the police, because I was having the chief go through the exercise, because his, his people work 12-hour schedules, and they work three days on, a couple of days off, and it, we wanted to make sure that that, those, that percentage would not overly compromise his abilities. So, he's had a chance to look at that, and he's come back and said that his department, under full staffing, could operate under the 30 percent guideline. So, that's, those are the only two changes to the original document.
Thank you, Calvin. Does anyone have any more questions? Can I get a motion to approve the updated personal manual?
I make a motion to approve.
Resolution 2018-04. There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, Calvin. I don't have anyone on the agenda that would like to speak currently. Is there anyone that would like to speak? No? All right. We're going to go ahead and move forward into staff reports. Chief? Yes, you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Yep, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. During the last two-week period, we've had 179 calls for service, none of which have been anything that's notable. So, with that, I wanted to say a few things. We had an incident, and I say we, law enforcement had an incident in Harford County a week or so ago, and that shows the effects of our training, of how all the agencies came together, went on to take on that problem, and, you know, although the results are what they are, it shows that we are prepared to deal with it, whereas you had law enforcement officers from Bel Air going to Aberdeen. Harford County was still in need of more, and Cecil County Sheriff's Office staffed a few of the reunification locations. Things like that shows that law enforcement together throughout this state are prepared for those incidents, if they unfortunately happen. The times are starting to get darker, and it's still warm outside, although it's been raining quite a bit. You do have a lot of pedestrian traffic that's been floating around town, kids walking from, you know, sports practices, fall ball, football, and so forth. So, be mindful of what's around you while you're driving through town. Also, the amount of pedestrian traffic along Main Street and Queen Street has increased tremendously during the day, based on the new business in town. So, again, pay attention to intersections, because you do have families that are crossing to get to the new businesses. Also, schools open, stop for school buses with the flashing lights, and stop signs out. That's our future, that's getting on those buses, so we've got to take care of it. Be mindful of that when you're commuting through town. And my officers are looking at traffic violations more seriously because of these, you know, reasons. So, with that being said, that is my report for tonight, unless I have any questions from the board.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yeah, I just want to give two shout-outs to some of our staff. First of all, the administrative staff inside, Judy, Deanna, and Linda, they have done a great job of streamlining a lot of our operations, and we are actually freeing up more time for the employees to be taking on more tasks. The three of them have done a fantastic job in the utility billing system. We are going through an upgrade in the utility billing system, which goes all the way back to the problems that we had roughly this time last year, where we had the system crashing. So, we're still in the process of that complete conversion, but as the residents are seeing in their utility bill packets, we're able to track information much better than we have in the past, and we're able to get information from people and reach out to them real-time and try to help them with their water and sewer bills, and give them a heads-up whenever they are having issues with water running, so forth and so on. It's also going to be a great tool for the police department for whenever we need to contact people in the event of an emergency, whether it be a rental property, and we need to get ahold of the landlord to advise them... to advise them of something. The database will be updated. So in your utility bills, we went to the eight-and-a-half by 11 as opposed to the postcard because we want to be able to provide more services and information for our residents. So we're going to continue to put things other than just a utility bill in there to keep people up to speed on events that are going on. So again, I want to thank Judy, Deanna, and Linda for that. And then I also want to give a shout-out to the Public Works Department in reference to the sidewalk work that they are doing. Couple meetings ago, I reported on the amount of paving and patching that they had done. And recently, they have been dancing around the raindrops and doing a lot of sidewalk work. So I just want to recognize them and all the work that they have been doing.
Perfect. Thank you, Town Administrator. My report is very brief this evening. I only have one thing, and that is our Fall Spooktacular, which is going to be Saturday, October the 20th. And it is going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I am super excited. Calvin spoke of the new billing system. We're going to be able to send a flyer out to all of our residents through that billing system. We're going to go ahead and include this flyer right in there as additional mailer to their water bill, so we'll be able to reach more people. We're going to also be able to have different updates, whether it's traffic updates from the chief or other things going on in town. So I'm very excited about the new water billing format. This year, every single year, we try to do something new and something fresh. And this year, the elected body and myself, we got together, and our hallmark event that we're going to be doing for Spooktacular is bumper cars. So we're going to be doing bumper cars in the main square in addition to inflatables and pony rides. Yeah. Yeah, pony rides and a costume contest that Janes is going to sponsor again this year. But Spooktacular wouldn't be possible without all our business sponsors that sponsor this every single year. So a big shout-out to them as well. Commissioner Althanreath?
Okay. I've got a couple of things, and a couple of them are going to be repeats from our meeting last week. And since we had our last meeting on a different date than normal, I thought it'd be good to go over these again. As Calvin was saying, the utility bills are going to have other things in the envelopes with them. And I think this is what you were talking about, Calvin, the, the form that we've put out to have you list any businesses, or whether you've got a resident, or if you have several rental properties. List this stuff and get it back to Town Hall. This will help us update our database of contact information and who owns what, where some people have moved, there's been family separations, there's been foreclosures, all kinds of different things. So if you'd please get this back, you can bring it back in when you pay your water bill. You can drop it in the mail if you want. You can put it in the mail slot out front. Or if you have capabilities at home to scan it and email it back, the address is on here. So the other thing I wanted to go over again was our yard waste collection. Every Monday, our Public Works guys go out and canvass the whole town, every street, and they pick up yard waste. I'd asked to have a list sent out because a lot of residents are not, not knowing what they're supposed to do, what they can put out there. But I want to go over it again. Like I said, it's picked up every Monday. This is something that's built into our Town Tax for Town Residents. The items collected are leaves, weeds, brush, grass clippings, and tree branches no more than three inches in diameter and four feet long. Prohibited items are tree limbs in excess of three inches in diameter and four feet long, tree trunks, limbs, or other items resulting from a large tree removal or work performed by a tree trimmer, arborist, landscaper. If you have a tree fall due to one of these storms we've had, and that can get quite expensive, we've got a local guy that you can contact, Chaz Blandford, Blandford's Tree Service. Touch base with him if you have some large stuff to get rid of. Or if you need some help, contact Town Hall. Talk to either the Town Administrator or our office manager, and they'll help get you some direction. Some required containers, when, this is very important. When you put stuff out for the Public Works guys to pick up, please be mindful that they're trying to do the whole town in one day, and they need you to, to help a little bit. So yard waste can be put in approved paper yard waste bags, a container that can be emptied, such as a trash can, but not to exceed 40 pounds in weight. If you cut your grass and you fill up a trash can, you get all this rain we've had, that stuff gets really heavy. If you put out branches, please bundle them together. Get some crab string, fodder twine, or something. Try to cut these up, make nice neat piles, bundle them up so the guys, when they come by, they can pick them up and go. It's a very time-consuming, hard job because they not only pick them up in front of everybody's house, then they have to go empty that trailer into a bigger dumpster. And once that gets full, there's a, kind of an expensive tipping fee for that dumpster at Cecil County Landfill. So I'd asked that those rules be sent out with the next utility bill also, so that everybody knows, because once this rain stops, we're into that fall season where everybody's going to be working on their yard, be raking leaves for a couple of months, and still cutting grass for a while, and cleaning up our yard. So like I said, help the Public Works guys out with the stuff you put out there for them to pick up. I think that's all I've got tonight, Mr. Mayor. Oh, one other thing, on the water line, you may have seen down at Route 1, Red Pump Road, there's a big crane down there, a big pit dug. They're preparing for the boring underneath Route 1, which is one of the last pieces left. Specialty equipment that has to be brought in. I guess now they're going to have to let the ground get pumped out a little bit with all this rain we've had, but they're very close to tying that all together. And work is going quite well there. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I have no report.
Commissioner Pearson?
No report.
Commissioner Warnock?
So we have the Civil War reenactment coming up, October 5th to 7th, I believe. So that's, it starts Friday. Friday's for students only, so it's open to the public on Saturday and Sunday. I believe they have similar schedule to last year with a dance on Saturday night. And I don't know if there's a baseball game this year or not. There was, did we, one thing that I think we didn't, we kind of skipped over, but I was, it should have been brought up on new business probably, was I think there was some discussion we needed to have on the trash service, the bulk items. Do we want to discuss that tonight, or? I remembered it when you brought up.
Yeah, we probably should start talking about that because, as we know, when we had our trash contract done this year, the price went up. The price, not only for just regular trash collection, but the cost of bulk items put out. And one of the things we've been looking at is how that's going to get paid for because it's gotten very expensive. We passed a budget with just a small amount of money to do other work in the town, sidewalks, streets, stuff for the parks, as well as Public Works crew and the Police Department's equipment. So what we are thinking is going to have to happen is that if you have bulk items to put out, we're going to have to look at residents paying for that independently, not being paid through Town Tax. Or if you have the capability, load that up, take it to the landfill yourself. It's a lot cheaper to do that.
Previous years, Waste Management had not charged the town for the bulk item pickups. So when residents would call and say they had a bulk item and placed it out on the curb, there wasn't an issue. Moving forward, under our new contract, all of the contracts that we looked at, the companies charged for bulk pickup. We went with the lowest, which was Waste Management again. But this year, they decided to start charging the town for bulk items.
And Calvin, I believe that charge is $50 per item? Is what Waste Management's charging the town?
Yes, that is correct.
So I think we have to figure out how to deal with that cost on an ongoing basis.
We're going to have an ongoing discussion on how we'll move forward with residents contacting the town, and then how they go about paying for that bulk item pickup and go from there.
I think for due diligence, I think it would be important to shed a little bit more clarity. We do anywhere from six to 10 bulk pickups a week. So if you project that over 52 weeks, that's, you know, we're not talking about isolated instances. And although it has not happened yet, in the past, people might squeeze out a little bit more bulk items than what they should have, and it wasn't a big deal. But the contractor has said that they will charge additionally for the second item. So it, we could be talking, you know, a couple thousand dollars when it's all said and done. So that's why at least a discussion has to be had on how to properly deal with it.
But when it comes down to it, it really is Waste Management adding that cost in. It's not the town itself adding that cost into the residents.
Yes, and I also think it's, I think another rule of thumb that you always try to do when you're providing municipal government service is to make sure that people that are not requiring the service are not unduly paying for the service. And so if you have 900 and, I think it was like 900, off the top of my head, 900 trash pickups. If you are getting six to 10 a week that want bulk pickup, that means the other people that might never need bulk pickup are actually underwriting that cost for that. So it's, it's sort of like if somebody comes in and wants to get a building permit for something, you, the people that are not putting the deck on their house are not the ones who pay for the building permit. It's the person who's putting the deck on their house that pays.
One of my neighbors had a bulk, some bulk items he needed to take and loaded up his trailer and took it to the dump himself.
You know, the, the cost kind of starts too with the landfills. They've increased the charge for.
Tipping.
You know, tipping there. I just made, past two weeks, two trips there. And the first trip, I had a lot of stuff, and it was $14. The second time, it was just a couple of things. It was $14. So, you know. But $14 compared to 50 is a big savings when you do it yourself, if you can, or if you know somebody. But like you said, we need, we're going to have some more discussion, but we definitely have to do something different.
Can we have that added to the agenda maybe next meeting?
Calvin can get us some more detail and talk about it some more.
Do you have anything else in your report?
That was it, no.
All right.
Thank you.
Upcoming meetings, we have the Planning Commission Workshop on Monday, October 1st at 6:30. Town meeting Tuesday, October 9th at 7:00 p.m. Another Planning Commission Workshop meeting Monday, October 15th at 6:30 p.m. And then the next town meeting is Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. Like I said, the Fifth Annual Spooktacular will be Saturday, October 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then Town Hall will be closed on Columbus Day, which is Monday, October 8th. Is there any more business to become before the board this evening? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.